Approval of the previous minutes.
Just to clarify, the date of the minutes that you're discussing would be the March.
Cool, that's correct, yes. Yeah.
I didn't look at them, I know somehow. I don't, did we, or I missed that?
Yeah, they're not.
Okay.
Yeah.
You missed that?
Yeah.
So, my bad.
All right, so, okay, look towards me.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. Thank you. I'll make sure I look at them.
Probably.
They should have been sent out on or though. Three and seventy, so honor about March sixteenth.
Yeah, so, we noticed it in the.
Jay, of course, wants to.
Um, yes, so I did attend the CAC meeting on Monday, in which they run over part one of the Iron Star submission. I have also been in contact with the Iron Star team, confirming the meeting for Wednesday, April twentieth at seven P M. I read at the town hall and available soon, and I'm also coordinating with them on the secret search.
Conference check, do you have any issues with either the applications enforced tonight?
Yes.
All right. Then we'll move into new business. Slot application. Who's representing slot? Come on up there. Where do I go? Well, yes, just get up here so we can at least, okay. One, two.
I'm gonna need some help right now. I'd like to step here.
We've got any. Where it's from, you will want to just explain to the board exactly what you're looking to do.
Basically, I'm taking the existing structure there and adding, in addition to the back, that's about five hundred fifty square feet. That will be, that will be kind of your kitchen. Building as stands now is extremely small, about three hundred and thirty, three hundred and forty square feet. And there's just no room to really do anything, so it's just gonna become a bit more comfortable in space, space wise. But all in all, finish will be less than a thousand square feet total in foot field and.
And so there's an existing basement there, right?
There is an existing basement, that's a high point of the whole building. Yeah, yeah, and it's in a, the existing base is actually in really good shape, the mortar, it's slot working. As a carpenter, you usually see a lot of nightmare, wood clock, whoever did it did a great job, and that will end up being a utility space.
Well, in the basement, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
And that will remain.
Yes, yeah.
And is then, addition getting on the foundation?
The addition foundation, we're gonna, when we, when we get into it, depending on whether it's straight ledge or not, we'll determine how far down we go. But we may just slide it, if it's all straight up rock. But most likely, if we can go down four feet around perimeter, if it's, if, even if it is some tough digging, we'll probably, we'll probably go down four feet. But don't really see us having necessarily even any crawl space in there, might just end up getting.
Grasslands.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And what's the primary use of it, the maintenance, is it the gas?
Yeah, it would be for dance, dance hall for, for one of those workers down on the farm.
Yes, it, it is meant to be for one of the people working.
So go for the primary.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
No, no. Okay.
Is there any other structures on this lot, if this is the only structure on one lot?
Or is it, is there one? There was another one that was behind it, that was just a hardwood, yeah, absolutely. That one was kind of an interesting structure, as well as they had married a camper to the building, and the camper served as the bathroom and the kitchen area.
In a reed tree.
Yeah.
Have you, have you gotten a tool from the health department on the septic?
Uh, septic, I know, Dan, you've been, that Christian architect has been in contact with the health department, and it, it was a very positive conversation. Because where the septic is going will be, will be downhill from the property, so it won't be a problem. And it seems like it's just in feel, as it, as it seems to be leached where the house is, and back behind the house up the hill, where the, where the septic would be. If we indeed do need to put in a new septic, it just looks like it would be in big soils at that point, so we feel fairly confident. For a two bedroom, it would, it would be fun. And actually, Columbia County Health Department sort of decided, uh, okay with helping on the design of the, of the septic itself. Which I was kind of surprised at hearing, but it, you know, that's what I heard from the architect.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions?
Is there, will there be much treatment?
Very little, very, very little. It was one tree on the, on the ridge that was leaning right over, over the existing structure, that was cut back. So really very little of that was true. Where the, where the new structure is going, there's no trees in that area of any significance at all, city at all.
Yeah, it may look like there was treatment, but there were a lot of fallen trees. Yeah, you've already collected, so there's piles there, but they were, they were already, oh, yes.
Well, the reason. So, if you're within five miles of that cave, um, trees aren't supposed to be removed.
Right.
So just to be aware of.
Yes, yeah.
Because they're in danger and probably getting worse.
Yes.
Where, where's the woods?
Somewhere up from Route twenty-two, I don't know exactly, it's on Hartley property, Catalina Road.
Oh, okay.
But this map shows the whole, you know, the map.
Yeah, for.
Right.
Degree of their, their forage.
Yeah, Dan's had his experience with that, so, and, yeah.
What's your experience with that?
Well, we had one house.
Of the.
Kind of thing, and there were, there's enough of that, that we had removed to another location. So they weren't destroyed.
Oh, yeah.
Do you have any questions?
But this thing, this thing's actually gonna be going out to the west, right?
Yeah, I think it will be kind of right off the line, yes, yeah, exactly.
Okay, it'll look pretty much the same as the existing, slightly different.
So the refinement, the truth, slightly above the existing refinements there. So it'll be just somewhere involved, it's ceiling, kitchen, living area.
I guess that's a little better.
Yeah. We're hoping that the frame on the existing is still, you know, it looks like it is, so, it was all framed in beautiful fur, but there'll probably be some fire that's gonna come up. The new, it should, it should be a really nice spot, it's gonna have a nice view out this way, right up here.
Okay, more questions? Let's take motion.
So for.
For approval with conditions that the health department rules being in first.
Um, a statement that secret negative.
Negative.
Not required?
Where.
Yeah. Motion second. All favor.
Hi.
Both carried, and also on the motion to approve, um, conditions that the health regulation be met first.
Motion.
Motion made second.
Second.
All favor.
Hi.
Both carried.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's, let's see.
Okay, Marion. Come on up.
How are you all? I'm Rachel Marion, by the way, I bought the property across the street, fourteen fifteen, yeah. There's two puppies here, are in here, and then mine. I'll be helping out. Can you guys in here?
Yeah, that's fine, um, we're just waiting back. You know what, yeah, we're gonna move. Give us an overview, we're just looking to do.
Yeah, I am looking to open up a wine and spirit shop in this old cafe, or previous cafe. So the name of it will be Fulton and Forbes Collected Wine Spirits and Wares. So the name Fulton and Forbes is just coming from the cross streets that my grandfather grew up on, so I just wanted a little homage, homage to him. And then my goal will be to sell, obviously, wine spirits, and the wares would be everything pertaining to drink, barware, glassware, et cetera. Um, and yeah, so I've worked in hospitality now for ten years, I graduated from Culinary Institute, American High Park, about ten years ago as well. So I've been a collected decade in the wine industry between sommelier, front of house, sales, and now production. I've been working for three years at Hudson Chatham Winery over again, so I've really got to make a lot of connections throughout the community in Columbia County. And I'm really excited to extend myself in the southern reaches of the county in Ingram, so. Yeah, I'm hopeful to preserve the space, but also revive the space that's always served the community in some way, shape, or form, and now offer a convenience that hasn't previously been offered to the area.
And you are currently the owner of the building?
Correct.
I guess there must have been some confusion or misunderstanding at some point, is the septic system.
Correct, yeah, so I thought I had done my due diligence with talking with the contractor and the engineer regarding approval, and my understanding was that it was exclusively coming from C C D O H. So unfortunately, there was a little bit of crossed wires there, and I didn't realize I needed town approval to start the septic, because nothing was being done to the building. It was the improvements that were required that I knew about upon purchasing the building.
From, from the previous.
From Eric.
Submit, right.
Correcting.
Did the health department approve what it should do?
Yes, yeah.
Jimmy, what, what they have is, if you recall, last year, the previous owner was in and asked us the question whether or not something would be permissible in that location. He already, he already had a plan, a site plan drawn for two bedroom, two bedroom house, right? And a letter from Columbia County Health Department that's in, in style, that said that the design that they, that Pat Brindag has had shown was permissible, and, and, okay. So, and apparently, from what we understand, the, there's been discussion with the health department, that obviously, this use will be less impact than a two bedroom house. But it's still gonna, it's still gonna require at this point, you know, that, that final approval from Columbia County Health Department.
Yep.
Yeah. Just to be clear, guys, we're, we're working with the Columbia County Department of Health, like you said, it was designed for a two bedroom house, which means the location of that sand filter bed was originally set up to not have parking space over there, they were gonna do away with the parking lot on the, that's gonna be on the west side, this side over here of the building. Obviously, with it being a retail location, you're now gonna need more than two parking spaces, so we're gonna need to add a parking lot over there. You typically don't wanna drive on top of a sand filter unless you take really special care of it, so in this case, we're, we've already contacted Mike Ruzio about shifting it over. Rachel brought Pat back into the project to work with Mike in order to modify that design slightly, and so we're just working on getting Mike, Pat, and Rachel, and the site plan all back in line with each other. Basically, we're just looking at sliding that sand filter bed slightly to the west to get it out of the travel way.
Now, the rest of the parking area that's in existence is going to remain?
We'd like to keep the impervious area that's there, just gonna flip back for a second, that's in condition. So the existing site plan, or existing site had gravel parking lot back to this area here. Those of you with eleven by seventeens in front of you may notice there's a little gray line that cuts across the plan right in front of the old septic tank. That's where the gravel previously ended when it was a deli mark, and then gravels up to the split rail fence that travels alongside the stream on the other side. We'd like to maintain those impervious areas and expand on it a little bit more. In our proposed conditions, we're looking at, one, adding a little bit of gravel to this front side yard here, so that we can get the adequate width for two cars to pass each other, and have an ability to turn in, and then we'd like to add a little bit of impervious back here to meet the town's code for number of parking spaces. We'd like to be able to do that without having to mess with that twenty-five foot buffer by the stream. As far as fencing, I don't know if any of you had a chance to walk by the side or walk over the site, there's, there's an existing split rail fence that runs along the stream. I was there today, it doesn't look like it's, it looks like it needs to be replaced. So we'll be talking about replacing the split rail fence along the, along the existing parking lot, and then for the resident that's next door, we wanna be good neighbors. We're talking about a stockade fence, which would block any headlight or, or light trespass onto his yard. There's already some existing vegetation, but it's dead up to a certain height, so we just wanna make sure we're not shining headlights across to the neighbor.
How high was that stockade, six foot?
We're currently proposing six foot, yes.
And also, that little structure has been removed, that's in the back on this.
I'm sorry, I thought I removed it.
That, the white one?
The playhouse.
It was a kid's.
Playhouse.
But that's been removed, right?
It's been removed, correct. It was not in the best condition, and it was really close to the creek, so for that purpose, I thought it best to be removed, because it was just declining.
There's existing walkways on the front and the side of the building, we'll need to shim up, depending on where the project falls out, or best case scenario is that would be, the wood would be replaced with concrete in time, just so that it's a hard, stable service, surface, but at the time, right now, we're talking about just bringing stone up flush to it, so that we have a compliant surface between the two. Other additional improvements on site, there's no dedicated A D A spot, and I think that's kind of a factor of having gravel, right? People kind of forget about that, the age of the structure, so we're looking at working in an A D A parking spot with signage and parking stops, and trying to meet the, the nine spaces for the tax code for.
But there would be one bath.
Correct, one restroom, which I think's indicated on. Eric, you were.
Yeah, so it'll be. The twenty-five foot buffer from the stream is a twenty-five foot vegetable buffer in our town wall.
We do have that, but it's existing, not to remove it.
Yeah, so, I mean, this is an existing use structure, but like your A D A is in that buffer zone, um, a little bit.
Just, just to be clear, that's already a gravel parking lot, and so that eight foot space, that's not even gonna be a parking spot, we're currently proposing it, we were just down on site talking about it. That eight foot space is really, what you would typically have is a no parking lot between spaces, and so there's only gonna be a sign placed there. The, the parking spot, the A D A spot would be, would be the next one south.
So that's sort of encroaching on the stockade fence, I mean, on the split rail fence.
The split rail fence is behind the vegetated level buffer, which is right here, sorry, so buffer here, split rail here.
So will you be adding mannequins and the buffer in that area, because there's, there's some there now, but will you be moving that up?
Rachel, I would assume we'd like to add something.
Absolutely, and I feel like that's something I'm more touched on with Randy.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was adding more vegetation there. Yeah, and things that are kind of meant to grow up here, and suited for the climate.
Yeah, for the buffer. Is there, um, is there like a gutter on the house?
No.
Because the water is, it's just running off the roof.
It's just running off the roof, so I will be adding a gutter. My goal is to add a gutter, yes.
As far as vegetated plantings, is there a requirement the board's looking for us to meet, or is it more like, you'd like us to show the plan? I just want, when we come back, I'd like, you know, what we're doing, what we.
Yeah, that's more.
Well, we have, I haven't seen it yet, um, I have, have you seen it?
Over.
The buffer, to look at the.
Yeah.
Because it's probably very steep.
But it's deep.
And, and so the idea is to.
Stabilize it.
Stabilize that trap runoff, and so like if you're having all this runoff from the roof, from the parking lot, there's nowhere for that water to perk down. Or if there is anywhere, then try to get that to perk down before it goes, runs off and directly to the stream, because that's what's.
Yeah.
Stormwater pollution, right, it's gonna run off, it picks up oils and stuff on the parking, and then it runs, dunks right into the stream, so, um.
I think the best thing for you to do is, is take a look at some sort of a planning scheme, and then submit that, you know, to review.
Okay.
The other thing I would show on your plan before you come back for public hearing would also be silk fence. In that, in that, in that buffer, but now you're gonna be doing some other work, you're gonna be excavating for the septic, you know, you're gonna be doing some stuff, so let's protect that buffer as much as possible.
On the, I noticed on your application that you indicated that there were deed restrictions or right of ways, and you had checked yes for that. Do you have copies of those, or is it, is it just this driveway here?
Correct, yeah, it's just that, and to my knowledge, there's no easement on that, the neighbors just use it.
Okay, if there was, or if you found that, that we just.
Of course.
Mr. Russell will have that for us.
About the small corner of the driveway.
That's what I thought it probably pertained to.
Yeah.
Is there any chance I could get an application of the materials previously submitted? I was, I kind of got brought on late, and we were, I just wanna be able to review them to make sure we're some inconsistent materials.
Yeah, if you talk to Jay.
Okay, perfect.
So the lighting on it too, we need to kind of know what kind of fixture you're talking about, so like glare for, for cars, but for fixtures, exterior fixtures?
Yes, there's two building mounted exterior fixtures, we spec the model, I kind of thought it was a little early to provide you guys the sheet of it, it is a full color fixture. It, it's a dark sky compliant, I don't, I didn't believe you guys had a wattage requirement, if I did, I missed it. It's pretty consistent with a parking lot that's that small, right, there's a street light that's across the street that kind of helps light the site, and then there was two building lights on either side, so we're just gonna replace those with new fixtures that are dark.
Yeah, it just says size height, lighting materials specification, or other sign. And you didn't have your sign on here.
When we, when we come back, we'd like to bring just like a little sketch of what the sign's gonna look like, we'll give you a size, color, text. I, that may be a typo, I think it's a fifty watt equivalent, I'm gonna have to come back.
Well, yeah, this is, this is very, very hard. Now, if you haven't done so yet, just keep looking for zoning for commercial site plan, you know, check out the boxes necessary.
Yeah, you guys have that checklist in there.
Good rule, everything's all covered.
Do you have an anticipated amount of customers, like a day or week, or in certain times, or something like that?
My guess would be the weekends will be on the busier side, I will be owner operated, so, you know, one day, my goal is to be open seven days a week and serving the town seven days a week, but because of that, I intend on being closed on Tuesdays. But yeah, my guess would be a little bit heavier traffic on the weekends, and then during the week, I'll probably be a little bit more even keeled.
And how late you.
My latest time will be eight P M. So. Correct, yeah. And that will only be on Saturdays, everything else will be seven P M.
Questions?
I have a couple more questions for the board. Just like, so first off, I was kind of curious if we would fit into the ability to have either abbreviated process, a little bit shorter processes, restarting with the existing business that was there on a site, and so we could come with the right materials for next week, is there a reason? Yeah, I'm sorry, next month, is there a reason we couldn't, we couldn't wrap this up next month, or?
Well, I think if, if the board's so inclined, they'd probably, you know, look to grant sketch plan approval tonight.
Okay.
Following this presentation, if that be the case, we can then set up a public hearing.
That would be fantastic. And obviously, all of that would be contingent on us getting that approved.
Right, and, and, and meeting, meeting all the requirements in the, in the zoning code.
Okay.
And the sketches for the, the planting.
Yes, of course.
We will bring it back.
Do we have permission to build a walkway up? Yeah.
Permission's granted by me, yeah.
Yeah. They'll give you a hand while, you know, the wind stream is in that buffer back there.
Do me a favor and walk on around in the daytime out there, it is slippery and there's changes in levels, so.
Yeah.
The other piece that I guess I was curious if I could, just wanna confirm that we would see this as a type two action under receiver, as a maintenance of an existing structure. Okay. If it's type two.
We can, we can make that determination, you know.
As part of that process, okay. Uh, the other last one I have for you was, I just wanna bring everybody's attention to it, I know in the zoning code, you have a requirement for off-street parking of having a twenty-four foot wide access width, and parking, we're providing that at the area of the parking, but in order to buy ourselves some room for the septic system, we're showing an entrance width that's only twenty feet, which is adequate for cars to pass by each other, but I didn't wanna get to next week or next month and have an issue with it, so I figured I'd bring it to everybody's attention and see if you guys thought there would be any conflict there, any concern regarding that. Basically, what we're trying to do. Okay, we're actually providing twenty-four feet physically, but there's a fence, the building will place some snow to go, and so I'm just trying to buy a little space there.
You're gonna have like a trash dumpster or anything like that up there?
My goal is to not have it, I'll be flat packing all my boxes and tying them up, and I'll likely have room inside to hold them until trash removal. So that will be the main waste, will just be broken down boxes.
And then you'll have delivery trucks coming?
Yeah, but I can typically request a smaller truck, so I'm not gonna have large trucks coming through, especially given.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well.
There's room for a truck right here, and then the loading path would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel, back through the back door here, and in here.
I'll be keeping the existing walkway.
Yeah, that's what they gave when it was the restaurant.
Okay. And another piece, just as we're remembering things here, there's a door on this side of the property, right here, that door is gonna be removed.
Yeah, my goal would be to remove that door, and so I'll have. Um, and so I'll have a clean retail space on the interior and then leave all the windows and the main double doors as is.
For Ed, there would be two points of exit, you'd have one at the front door and one at the back door, just.
Well, another house, your neighbor is, that house is pretty close, I'm just wondering about um, there's, so your property line goes out past like where your septic is.
Correct.
There's maybe want to do some um planting there a little bit to separate and.
We're showing the stockade fence to the twenty five foot line, we certainly can, is your thought to plant this area, is that?
I think you saw.
I'm sorry, I got you.
Well, give a separation to them, to the residential.
Yeah.
To, uh.
You can see the shrub rate ends it up here, we can work in it, ends here, it's pretty, it's thick high, it's not as thick low, that's why we're worried about stockade fence here, but we can add something along this line.
Well, that's why I mean, look at it from closely, I have to drive out at nine times.
Just that, yeah, make sure it's like low ground, cause you don't want blocks.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Cause they're gonna have sight distance this way.
Yeah.
Any other concerns for the board members?
Any questions? I'll see you for a building comment, so.
Jay, you can enter them later.
Yes, of course.
So. Do you want to declare a lead agency, you want to lead till man wait, so.
Well, she's got it written now, right?
No, she does not.
She doesn't, okay.
Because that, this map was just, just arrived.
Okay, so, yeah, so we'll, we'll just do the sketch plan for the whole lead agency for next month. For public hearing, then we will have man's comments back.
Okay, so motion for this guy.
Yeah, okay, what's your made second?
Out of curiosity, who else would be lead agency?
Who else?
Yeah.
I mean, the county, cause county road, you know, anybody could do it, but I mean, if we're gonna declare a lead agency, there isn't stuff.
Okay.
You know, I just wanna see where our plan is.
Okay. So it was a motion.
Yeah, Jimmy and Paul. To motion for sketch plan approval. I don't have a question. Yeah. Doesn't have to go before the county because. Yeah, it's been cool, yeah, that's why, that's why we got the whole public hearing process and everything else. So, so it's gotta go for two thirty nine.
I was gonna recommend setting a public hearing for the June meeting because of the notification, the fact that C A C and N are gonna weigh in on this as well as um, so the two thirty nine notification, the adjoining property owner notification and the public notices.
What do you, what do you want to start the public hearing process?
Is.
Cause we came here to determine the way, determination, do we have a light backhand in two thirty nine? Man's comment.
And so, I'm sorry, I'm just asking for clarification, we're thinking that we can't get the two thirty nine end process complete by the May meeting, is that, is that a concern? Well, I, I think there's a number of concerns, um, your name is. Sorry, Ryan Morrison from Ty and Bond, I don't think I introduced myself. From where? From Ty and Bond Engineering. Oh, okay. Um, so a, a number of concerns, the ability to notify multiple parties, the ability for the planning board to review the consultants' mails, the C H D mail, as well as the ability to notify the public of the responses from the consultants. And to make sure that all of those things are done within the time of the code. So and that's because we don't have, we haven't submitted, but I'm just thinking, like, how is this different from, if we come back to May with a landscaping plan? You have the same submission time between May to June that you do from April to May, right?
No, no, I think we're Jay saying that um while all the rest is, is getting shaken out then that would give us the time by scheduling it for June now rather than wait till May and then schedule it only have a thirty day window.
And I mean, okay, so you're talking about another submission. I'm not sure when that submission's going to come.
Sure.
But I still have to start working on this.
Yeah.
And I'm going to be sending incomplete information to the county as well as to the consultants. So. Okay.
It's better to have a complete.
Yeah.
Full picture.
And I, guys, I don't need to be about it, I, I know Rachel would love to open a business, I'm just trying to talk through what the process.
No, I understand it too, right? Yeah, we wanna get it right.
Okay.
Cause that could delay, I mean, that could impact.
We could end up doing it twice, right?
Yeah, you know, and just waste time, so.
Um, okay, so if we submit in May, well, let's find a couple of weeks from now, there's a submission deadline, right? We submit in a couple of weeks from now, your thought is that we can
we, we can.
All those materials will go out to your consultants.
Yeah, well, our consultants, of course, will review it and you've gotten us at that point.
I mean, I'll, like, I'll start getting the information to the consultants basically immediately after I receive the information. Okay. I, as of yet, have not received those.
That's fair.
Yeah. Um, and, and I can work with you, you know, as the consultants come back with comments or questions, I can work with you through the process. But, you know, I, I don't think that you would get final approval in a month, that's long. Okay.
And if it has to go to county, it's got a little county meeting.
Yeah.
Like after review it.
I'll be honest, I think it's a county meeting.
Yeah, you're probably not gonna get it before county, before it's.
Yeah.
Before May anyway. It's, it's already that, what, seventh of the month, right?
The next county meeting is probably next week.
Yeah, they're pretty good, but, you know.
I mean, you know, we'll, we'll try and do it in Canada to move it along here, but.
Okay.
I think, you know, I think it's probably the way Jay has laid it out is probably the best way to proceed.
Okay.
But I, but I would suggest get your, your cementless and any changes in right away.
Sure.
The quicker we can review them, the less chance there is of problem at the end.
Okay.
Okay, so you got sketch plan, plan approval.
Cool, any else from you guys or?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jerry, you got?
There's one other. Two other.
Okay.
In terms of properties that may have. As far as properties that may be afforded by. Just know that they're sparing to work on something.
Okay.
They would come to us?
Yeah, applications would be coming. Any questions, comments, acknowledge the motion to. What you made, that's all, all in favor. This is a record in the last two years.
He's nervous, he's got, he's got many meetings coming in.
I know.